I'd like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, February 8, 2018. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Rafferty, David Keen.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
David Stewart.
Here.
Paul Doherty.
Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. It's not a recognition, but we do have a gentleman here to talk about Wilson Hall.
That gentleman, that's Dick Campbell.
Thank you. My name's Dick Campbell and happy to be back before you again. As I mentioned last time, I would have some plans for you. These are concept drafts. I also mentioned that in talking with some of these providers that it may not be large enough in terms of numbers of residents to stay within the envelope. So I've put together an addition that brought it up to 39 from 24. And we're beginning to run the numbers. So if I might pass this around in one set and then I can do some overheads.
Okay, thank you.
You're right. So this is the site plan. The square building, 40 by 60, so lower center is the brick building, Wilson Hall. Okay, I'll leave it pressed. All right, right here, this is the limits of the brick building. The thought was to, and I'll get to another plan, but maybe even put this roof back on to make an atrium for indoor/outdoor living four seasons. This is the tower. The thought may be to do a traditional gable here. There's a skylight right here now. Didn't really think that more skylights to put the rooms front to back would look as nice, but all up for interpretation and input. The back of the building, let's go back up on the middle. We come up into the parking area off middle and then down around on the lowest level, the now foundation level, more parking for the community space. And it's been mentioned that there are three parking spaces about in here for this building. So we shifted it off to the property line under theirs and will construct three parking spaces for that property. The setbacks are 10 feet. We've gone to 14 and we've mirrored the lot line. We still believe we'll be using this lower entrance off this level, which is not quite a half level, but it's down lower than some of the grading around the building. This is the tower for the elevator with a gable connector and a gable roof, wooden structure on the back. Any questions about the site plan? Let me see if I can get into the meat of it with the interior layout. At first, let's start with the foundation on the lowest level. Again, this is the limits of the envelope of the foundation. The thought was to open this up completely and make it window, door, window, door, window. And if you go back to the site plan.
That's actually the basement.
Yep, that's the drive around lowest level. This, because this is at the plane of the lowest floor, this is up above where the old porch roof was. So that, this is grade upper level. The thought is to make this half of the foundation, the community space that we promised for our community organizations if they wanted it. We're leaving the corridor, set of corridor concept in the building. So the stairs will be located exactly where they were before. In this area with this entrance that comes in from upper, on the upper level grade would be the commercial kitchen and then some storage and utilities down below. As you go out of the building, this would be a full foundation for the elevator, the pit, and the steel well, and the elevator room. And then this would all be at grade and frost wall and slab. So the first level is all on concrete. The entrance, as you remember, the drive came in this way, offloaded. I've been working with Jeff, he thought something about maybe expanding space for ambulance service and loading. This is a nine-foot porch that comes in undercover and then we'll go up into the rest of the space when we get to the next floor plan. Any questions about the foundation or lower? This, this level of floor plans are pretty much the concept that would flow up through the next three levels. So again, this is the envelope of Wilson Hall, brick building. Maintain the front entrance, maintain each of the openings in the building, the window openings, except for that one. We had to block that because of its connection and put a new window there. The rest are existing openings in the fenestration. And each side of the corridor, as they exist now, would become a living unit, more like an apartment. And then instead of having multiple residents in one room, generally in cases like this, it's two beds to a room with a adjoining bath, each of the residents would have their own room, little kitchenette, whether they have cooking facilities or not, we haven't figured that out, a full walk-in six-foot shower with the handicap bathrooms, one in each. And this would go up on three levels. Now, when we get to the third level, there's a full dormer up here now. And this area right here is where we may or may not be able to put a dorm. We'll talk with people from historic preservation and see what the mood is. But right now, each one of these floors, the main level, the second, and the third, could mirror each other and have four residents per unit, or six units, 24. So then we would put an opening at the end of the lobby, the hall, in the rear of the building. And then this is where our frost wall would go. And this is where the full foundation would be. So the elevator service is four floors, four-stop elevator. And then this would be either a manager's office on the first level, again, walking in undercover, columned porch, double doors into a gallery-type lobby. Fairly sunill, especially in the mornings, then either up the stairs or elevator into an unopened space. This may be more of a controlled area. So if there's a progression of services needed, they'd go from an apartment use to a single room with its own toilet flush and lav, and then a community shower room for five units on each level. Now, the design of this would be more the brick, complemented by a wooden structure, similar to the brick buildings that had the wooden summer kitchens. And it just would be a complement to it. So this is a gabled end, gable end. And then we, I've got a section here that I can show you how the two connect. Any questions on this? So this becomes 24 and this becomes 15 more.
Because that section is more of a controlled, would there be a kitchen facility there where meals would be made for them?
No, that would all be prepared down here.
Okay.
And.
[inaudible]
Some service providers.
Okay.
So we don't know if there'd even be kitchens in there or food back.
Okay.
Maybe warming. But the environment is to feel like home as much as possible.
So both, both buildings are three stories?
Yep. This one's three, this one's four.
Oh, yeah.
Counting the lower.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other questions on the, yeah?
Yeah, I have a question. And it's because someone called and asked me this question today and I wrote it down, which was, does the type of facility that you're looking to do require a certificate of need to be done by DHS? Because the concern was that certificate of needs, they talked about when First Atlantic was going to come here, that the certificate of need process took more than a year.
Yep.
Does it need a certificate?
We don't know yet. They're actually one of the ones we're working with.
Okay, well, that was a question that was raised because that, that process takes a long time.
Yeah, I think we're, some of us are looking at that process for the whole medical profession and need sometimes. Many think that's a little outdated, but there's a possibility.
So you're still evaluating or finding out?
Yep. Any other questions on?
We got one that.
You said that there was going to be five units on that floor right there.
Yeah.
Okay, and then you have an office in the corner. The office going to continue for all three levels?
That space will, whether it's another room needed for therapy or whatever, but there'll be that space. The footprint will mirror this all the way up at this point. And all of this is subject to change from the provider that may have other need. But we've kind of left this space for something other than resident support. Anything else?
I have a question. What did you say, the provider, what are you thinking about as a provider?
Well, yeah, well, there are obviously different levels of health care provided.
But what are you aiming at?
We're, we haven't actually defined it yet, but closing in on memory care.
Memory care. That's mental memory care, but about disabilities, physical disabilities.
Well, everything will be accessible. So, yeah.
Okay. Just asking a question.
No. In terms of, of.
But you don't have a particular organization that you're aiming to do this with?
Not yet.
Okay.
No, we're kind of backing into that.
Okay. We will.
So this shows the section where we have bought the building. This is the north elevation of Wilson Hall. And this section at 22 feet is where it connects to the building. And the porch is down on this end, but this is a shaft. What I wanted to do is make sure that this, the elevation of the new building didn't take away from the elevation of the existing building, especially from the other side. So decent pitches, it's an 8/12 pitch. Still, the tower for the elevator is below the ridge line. This was an elevation from a set of plans that were here on file. I think that's a little bit taller than the actual lower section. And as you can see, the top is the same. So what will happen is because it's following the lot line, it will extend by here slightly at an angle coming away from the building. And then this L will be parallel but separated by about nine feet with a porch that you can see from the south side, the riverside.
That's where that entryway will be, that nine-foot.
Yeah, so the, yeah, there's an entryway right here that goes down into the basement, inside the building, six or eight feet. So the porch will go right down this building line and be back nine feet, more like a piazza, just a walk-off. Any, any questions on the layouts or the concept drafts?
So how close are you going to be? You know, we talked about a five-month plan. How are we, how are you looking at that time?
We're working on it. Tuesday, we get the team together in terms of financing and the budget for operations. CI is still working with us. The, the tax credits are still in place from the federal tax bill, the 22 percent. So that's, that should help. But we're, the, the construction budgets and the operation budget will be done probably in the next week or so. So then we, then we search for the, for the operator.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Is that enough?
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions from the public? No, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll be back next month.
I have, that, that last thing that you put up there, it shows three rows of windows on the, on the brick side.
Matt.
It does have three rows on the backside?
I believe so. At least the plans that I've seen.
I want to look at it and then overhead, just the ground level on the second floor and the third floor, except inside though.
Yeah, it's in the dormer. Those are more plentiful up there, so they'll probably mirror these as we get onto it. We get to give it, that dormer was added a few years after it was built, so it really doesn't have to care. It's pretty good.
Dick, did you ever figure out the main preservation contact that you have there?
Greg, you asked him?
Yeah.
I, I did talk to him about it and he was as confusing the second time as he was the first time, so. No, he decided it wouldn't be, wouldn't be proper for either the town or, or the funder to do it at the same time.
The funding you're, you're looking for, is it even affected by historical preservation?
Um, no, we're seeing it as an asset.
Right.
And it would do the tower anyway. The thought might be to preserve the tower, lift it off and make it more accessible, where it's got the graffiti and everything on it, to make it more like a gazebo or something, and then reconstruct the same appearance up there, maybe lighter, lighter structure.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is consider minutes of previous meetings, the minutes for January 25, 2018. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the minutes for January 25, 2018. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Going on to item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. We have something, a letter from Governor LePage to the residents.
Yeah.
What else?
To the residents of Bucksport. And it, it relates to his concerns about the impact of nontaxable property by a land trust, et cetera, on municipal valuation. And this letter encourages residents to ask local officials how much land in the municipality has been taken off the tax rolls, as well as how much in tax revenue that land would have been contributing today. The majority of, of land trust property in Bucksport pays a fee in lieu to the community for, because they're not taxable for, for some of that land, not all. But that's the nature of the letter and it encourages, it's, a copy of it is on our website with the packet if anyone wants to feed in or wants to come in and take a look at what our nontaxable property is related to land trusts, et cetera, they'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. You have a question?
I'd like to make a comment.
Certainly.
Thank you for your summation. My name is Chris Johnson, I live in North Bucksport. I'm a board member of the Great Pond Mountain Conservation Trust. And I just wanted to respond, but to amplify basically what the town manager says. We have not taken any properties off the tax rolls in the town of Bucksport. We have paid full taxes on what we know as a Campanella property, and that property is now for sale, by the way. Our largest acreage is the new Chapman farm that we opened up for the public with trails. That is now in open space treatment, I believe. And then we just purchased another 15 acres across the road from that. I'm not sure that that's in that treatment yet. I'm not sure that's been processed, but that will be. We also, just a couple things I would like to let you know, that I will be sending all the councilors some information on land trust and the impacts they have in the state of Maine, as well as the well-being, some of the things they provide. I just want to remind the board that our land trust pays taxes on all its properties throughout, except ones that they manage but don't own. We now have an outreach and education committee, we're working in the school systems. Because of your kindness and with the Vernal Pool situation, we'll have that project wrapped up in the spring. So a lot of things that the land trust does here, and we do pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to item six, ordinances to be considered or introduced. Do you have anything, Mr. Stewart?
No.
Okay. Go on to item seven, discussion items for managers' clarification and direction over the council discussions. First one being foreclosures. Susan.
Okay, you have in your packet a list of 20 properties here in Bucksport that are in foreclosure for unpaid property taxes, a couple which also have sewer due, but they're in foreclosure for non-payment of taxes. Two of these, two on your list, since it was distributed, David Witham and Dorothy Miller, need to be removed. They've made arrangements for payment on those parcels, so those are not what I'm asking you to consider. The town has, over a number of years, sent out letters and requests and notices. And if you look in the last column, you'll see that some of these have never paid since they acquired the property. And some, it's been as, as long as 2009 since a tax, a payment was made. The other thing to note is that the vast majority of them are land only. If you see no building value, it's because it's land only. And then those that are, that do have buildings are not occupied. They're, and haven't been. So I'm asking for permission to put these out for sealed bid process so that the, the council can sell them to new owners which can utilize these properties. Many of these lots are larger enough for a house to be built on. And these abandoned, in essence, empty properties would be better suited to be rehabilitated and have people living in them. And finally, there are two properties on this list which are multifamily properties in the downtown area. And one is at 15 Central Street and one is at 2 Buck Street. They're the first two properties on the list. The comprehensive plan clearly identifies the need for housing in the downtown area that is walkable distance for people and that is apartments as opposed to single-family homes. And what I'd like permission to do with those two properties is to include in the request for sealed bids, some criteria that those be maintained as multifamily properties, at least at the extent they are, or if they were to add more units. These, those are, they're both very large structures that, that doing so would meet and would help meet another goal of the community, which is to develop housing in the downtown area that's walkable for people and, anyway, so the, as I said, two are off the list. I was contacted by one other one, which is a, an owner of one other one that is a, that's vacant, that hasn't had a payment since 2014, that asked if there was some way to be taken off the list. And I said no, that, well, I, I said that I wouldn't make that recommendation because it's not an owner-occupied property. There's no plan for its, to resolve the issue. And the property continues to deteriorate. It's got issues already. So that's my request, is the ability to go out to bid and to seal bid and to have requirements on those first two properties that the bidders maintain their use as multifamily property in order to help meet some of the housing goals in, in the community.
Okay. We'll be taking this up on the agenda items.
There is, I think there are some people here too that wanted to talk about.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rusty Wade and I was just, would like to say, if it's feasible at all, if any of the properties could be used or converted for elderly or maybe low-income housing so that people could remain in their community when they no longer have a home. I have a good friend who lived here for over 30 years, and she had many friends here and contributed to the community. Then in her 80s, when her husband died, she had to sell her house and there was nothing here for her to live in that she, that was available, so she had to go to Bangor where she knows nobody and has no connection. And it's, it can be pretty upsetting and tragic and happen to any of us, you know, elderly and, so I just wanted to think about.
I think that's why we have decided to, on bidding the two properties in town, to keep them in, in house. keep them in housing for that purpose.
Right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to go on to item B, which is spectrum line extension to Millvale and Bucks Mills.
We'll table that. There wasn't, there was some.
You're going to table it?
Yeah.
Item C, bid for automatic door openers. Susan.
A couple of years ago now, the town council became involved more actively in an accessibility program in the community and became an age and ability-friendly community, and started a grant program for businesses to help with handrails and those kind of things to help people access, and committed to making our building more accessible than it was by adding push-button entrance door to the upstairs. And we had gotten an estimate back then for that, plus some work to make these crash doors in the back, so you just push to get out without having to turn a button or something. And we did that, but we hadn't done the front, so we got another bid from PDQ Door, who's the company that's done the work on our town garage doors and has, is fairly local in Hampden, to, for $5,200, to install the push-button door system upstairs on the, at the town office to complete that commitment, that, the money was raised two years ago in your budget to do it, greatly in excess of what we need, but the project for $5,200, and I'm asking for permission to have PDQ Door install that system to make our, our front entrance handicapped accessible by the outside touch, so the doors automatically open, people with wheelchairs or walkers or a stroller or whatever else you are doing can get in more easily.
And we had budgeted well over that, right?
$18,000. We spent two to do this. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Comment? Pearl Swenson, the Bucksport resident, volunteer for the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition, the senior resource committee. On behalf of Show You Care, our senior resource committee, thank you very much for considering the automatic door opener for the town office. Your example of making accessibility available for individuals of all ages with mobility issues is so very important. As our committee continues to work toward accessibility in our town, your support of this automatic door installation is really greatly appreciated, and we thank our town manager and each and every one of your councilors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. Okay, we're going to go on to item D, recreation committee recommendations for new treadmills.
They actually got handled in the finance committee. Nick Tomasco, the director of the Y here, if you want to say a couple of words real quick, Nick, or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm Nick Tomasco, the operation director of Bucksport YMCA. We're stewards of a fitness center that the town owns, and recently contributed $8,000 for a total renovation. We've been increasing membership ever since. We're up to about 75 members in the space. We currently operate at a deficit with the fitness center supervisors that we provide, but it allows us to keep the space clean. It allows us to help people exercise safely and just make sure that it remains a social space rather than just a fitness space. So we've been really happy with how it's been going. However, we identified two treadmills that have been failing, and to upkeep those machines, if we were to park them out, would be very expensive, but also keep them in the house and do all the work ourselves is a very time-consuming and expensive task. So our advisory board, the third Thursday of the month, recommended that we bring it to council, and we can get a very good deal through the YMCA's purchasing power, and we presented that to finance. So thank you very much for hearing that today.
So what we have from them is proposal for three treadmills that are better than 50% savings because of the partnership with the Y, so the recommendation from the finance committee was to approve.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to item E, committee structure. Peter.
The town manager is going to send all the council members a couple of draft proposals of what our committee structure may look like. We had great discussion on what our committee structure is now, what our plans are, what we should try to accomplish being in committees. It was felt by the folks that were here that we want to give, give all the councils a chance to look at it, ask them questions. One proposal was done by the town manager, another was presented by the code enforcement officer, so she's going to send those out to you folks, to everybody, to all of us, take a look at them, think about what we're trying to accomplish, and then we'll, we'll talk about it again for the next ordinance committee meeting during our next town, before our next town council meeting.
Thank you. Okay, item F, citizens complaint. Susan.
I received a call, this week two, actually, on Monday, from residents of Upper Long Pond Road who live beyond the sledge site where the town maintained portion of the road stops. And the gentleman that called was hospitalized and upset, asked me to notify the council that they were unhappy that the town doesn't maintain the section of the road from the sledge site on because not only do they live there, some other people have since, they moved there, moved out on properties beyond there, and that the land trust had opened for public use a parcel further up the road. And so I'm relaying that they're unhappy and indicated that if the town didn't do something, they were going to seek legal action. So I did some homework on, to sort of determine where this came from and how long that section of road from the sledge site out had been not maintained by the town. And I looked in records, and I reached out to former town manager Roger Raymond, who was here for 28 years, and he indicated that there had been no maintenance on the road since the town manager before him, Roger Foster, was here, and back as far as 1981. And that continued non-maintenance constitute a presumption of abandonment. We talked about this with Second Street. The difference in this one is this one is post-1965, so that that lack of maintenance over 30-year period removes the town's responsibility for any maintenance, and it preserves a public easement on it, which allows people that are going to the Conservation Trust or walking their dogs or whatever they're doing to do that. But doesn't constitute liability on the part of the town if somebody's injured walking there, or responsibility for maintaining it in terms of winter, summer, any kind of maintenance. Indeed, there's more use. I know that the part of the road that we've been maintaining right along the sledge site used to be maintained much differently. They're using, it's getting a lot more of attention now because there are people beyond that, so it has increased the need for our section of the road to stay in better traveling condition, because we're responsible up to that point. But according to, and there was an attorney's opinion in 2006, when you repaired a bridge, that the public portion of the roadway went to the sledge site only, that that's the limits of your responsibility. I'm not sure, I'm relaying this because, you know, this is a, this was a complaint. I've been asked to bring it to your attention, and I've done so. I, I'm not sure that, that there's anything I can do beyond explain what's that unless you chose to do something like rebuild a road or do something along those lines, but the, that, when all the parties on the road purchased property there, they were aware that it was not a town maintained property.
How long has this person been there?
Since 2009.
Almost 10 years.
And Mr., Mr. Raymond had a conversation at the time that, that that was happening, that the town would maintain as far as the sledge site and not beyond.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Well, I, I'm.
How many people live beyond? Two. Just two.
No, there's.
There's only two, there's only two structures out there that have people in there, beyond the sledge dump.
There's some before, I know, too.
Yeah, but there's only two structures out past the sledge dump that actually have people. There may be more than one person living in the, in the places, but.
There's, Jeff, two or three? Two, I think.
On the Upper Long Pond Road, there's currently a camper that's being occupied. There is.
That's before the sledge dump.
Yes, that's on the public way. Past the public way, there's a cabin. I'm not sure if that's being occupied or not. And then there's another residence past that, and then beyond that, there's another camper that's being occupied. And that's all I know about.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I recently was reading some information on the standards for a road, and that, the part that, that we're actually maintaining, that we're using, doesn't even come close. So going beyond that, you'd have to rebuild all of that to, to bring it to the standards that are required by the state and by the town in the ordinances, before you could even begin to work on anything any further.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not, we're going to go into agenda items. We're going to start out with item A, to adopt, resolve R.2018-40 to advertise properties for public sales via sealed bids. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second, with the language amended that we.
Can we amend that from 20 to 18? The, the resolve asked to advertise 20, there's 18 of them, and the resolve, but.
Yes.
As long as the council understands that the first two properties are going to have some caveats.
Correct.
Along with it.
Okay. You got that correction, Kathy? Okay, we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve, changing it from 20 to 18. Okay. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, to adopt resolve R.2018-41 to approve the application for Connect Me Grant Cable Line Extension to Millvale and Bucks Mills. I believe we're tabling.
Yeah.
Okay, item C, to adopt resolve R.2018-42 to approve a contract with PDQ Door for $5,200 to install handicap accessible entrance at the town office. How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, to adopt resolve R.2018-43 to use funds from Recreation Reserve to purchase three new treadmills for the fitness facility.
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
We are, we are going to use the quote that he got here. That's the number we're going with.
Yes, 13 to 72.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, to adopt resolve R.2018-44 to approve the borrowing of $144,938 for a three-year term from, for the 2018 freight line of plow truck. Susan, you have any more information on this?
Yes, I do. The, the town that, last August, approved, the council approved the purchase of a, a new truck for the highway department, that's a plow truck, and at the time you approved that purchase, you designated that it would be repaid over a five-year term. I'm, I received quotes for interest, and the interest quote that I received is 2.9% the lowest, is 2.9% from the first for three years. And the reason that I went with the three-year is that the price of the truck at $144,938, the addition of interest at 2.9% interest for three years is a little over $6,000, bringing the budgetary impact to $50,000 a year. And if we go to a five-year loan, the interest amount at 2.9%, which you can't get at five years, it would be higher, but even if it was, is over $10,000, so that it's considerably more interest with little impact budgetarily. So the request is to finance over three years at 2.9% interest from the first.
How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item F, to adopt resolve R.2018-45 to convey a pass of land owned by the town of Bucksport and located in Bucksport Heritage Park, Phase 2, Lot 4, to Greenhead Lobster. Rich.
Lou, I have Mr. Puren's here with me. I'm owner of Greenhead Lobster, based out of Stonington, Maine. He is looking to acquire map 3, Lot 54-04. You should have the project summary in your, in your purview with your approval tonight. He would like to go to the planning board in March 6th to get this project started. If you have any questions, he's right here.
Would you mind coming up and giving us, giving us a quick rundown on your project? Yeah, so actually, my town manager sent me to Bucksport because we were trying to get a project on in Stonington, and the, we didn't, we don't, ultimately don't have the water in Stonington, so I got, we'll go up to Bucksport, and I thought that Bucksport would be a better location into the distribution channels of Maine lobster. So that's how we came out to Bucksport. You have the sewer and water that we need. That's a very attractive site. The location itself is very attractive. Currently, we're a 20-year-old business. We have, we do, we're mostly live lobster, but we do a lot of frozen lobster. We're a well-known consumer brand here in the U.S., and we're doing all our manufacturing in New Brunswick right now.
Will you have any retail out of there?
No.
No.
Well, yeah, we'll have like website fulfillment, Amazon-type stuff, but not.
But nothing.
Not walking.
What do you actually do with lobsters? Do you extract the meat from the lobsters?
Yeah, we extract the, extract the meat from the claws, and then we're going to freeze the tails raw and extract the meat from the legs.
Okay. What's your disposal of the shells? How do you handle that?
That's going to have, you have to be lifted off every day, usually contracted with a compost company, but I think the bio, the pharmaceutical companies are now interested in drying the cells to extract the chitin, so they'll be removed daily. We won't be having them. They'll be compacted and then removed.
And they won't be going to our transfer station now?
Oh, no. No, 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 no. Hopefully, we'll be getting value for them. We'll be selling them.
We had that issue before.
[laughing].
We had that issue before where, where they were taking shells out there and it basically rotted our trailers out in a couple of years.
Yeah, I know. We'll hopefully be selling them for the chitin, yeah.
Now, now, you need fresh water for this?
A lot.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty heavy demand. I think I talked to Rich about that. We'll be using quite a bit, yeah. And that's, believe it or not, that's a, that's a scarce commodity in the coast of Maine.
And even though ours is treated, with some, I think ours is...
It's FDA for us, Rich. He drinks it, right? It's even, it's better than it's treated. You guys take care of the monitoring process of food safety. I don't have to do it myself. You guys do it for me.
Whether it would affect the lobsters at all?
No.
Okay.
No, it's mostly for hygiene. Because the water is used for cleaning. It's a, the daily hygiene process is water-intensive.
And how many employees are you planning on?
Probably 30 to 45. So, we have some technology thing we're working on, you know, that's pretty advanced technology we're going to be using.
This is 24/7 operation or...
No, no, maybe. I don't want to be limited by that. I don't plan on doing that.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, no, it's not, but I don't want to have many covenants that restrict that.
What's your estimate, how many thou, how many thousands of gallons a day?
It could be, it could be as high as 12,000 at certain times of the year because we, we might be doing something with, that specific process with crab that uses a lot of water.
What was the mill back in the day, 12 or 18 or what? What was it?
18.
Million.
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 Yeah.
Yeah. She was an umbrella.
Yeah.
And to clarify something that was misprinted in the Bucksport Enterprise in regards to the recapture period, the mortgage period, because of the value of this project, now we don't know the overall value until it's complete and the assessor does his work, but the recapture, this would be one of the shortest in the history of the Heritage Park, if not the shortest, 2.1 years.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second?
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public?
Yeah, thank you.
Further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to Bucksport.
Happy to be here.
Okay, item G, resolve R. 2018-46 to convey a parcel of land owned by the town of Bucksport located in Bucksport, Buckstown Heritage Park, Phase 2, Lot 5, to Pemaquid Muscle Farm. Rich?
Hi, owner Carter Newell is here as well. Denver Scotty-based business. He does a lot of his work up in the Trenton area by the airport, if you're familiar with that area there. He is looking at map number 3, Lot 54-05. So, the lots that we're looking at now, number 4 is the last lot on the left, number 5 is the last lot on the right. Again, he is here to answer any questions for you. He has also been in business for quite some time. Want that card?
And this project will also have to go to the planning board?
Yes, the, the hope for this project is once approval is done tonight to get that at planning board, March 6th as well.
Okay.
With both of them, I've worked with their engineers already.
Okay.
Getting started.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I could just say what the lobster guy said, said this is a good local location, and we're looking for the free, free phase power and, and the water and the sewer. And we have a muscle farm operation and we're expanding it with this new technology. We've developed submersible muscle wraps. They could grow about 100,000 pounds a year. And we do, we're putting nine of them up, up in this farm in Lemoine. And we're hoping if this is successful, we could replicate it in a number of different places. But this is sort of the first full-scale farm operation. And we're also happy that there's a freezing plant across the road, so we're hoping eventually get into some value-added processing. And we might do some distribution with the lobster guys would be across the street, so. Initially, we do all our processing on, on our barge, so we have a full processing line there, and then we need a place to just bag and do cold, cold storage and distribution. So, typically, like 10,000 pounds of mussels will come in, they'll go to our, our crew that we'll hire from the Bucksport area that will do all the bagging, and then they'll be all, doing all the distribution between here and Boston. And then every two days, we'll be bringing a load in.
Can you freeze mussels?
You can.
Okay.
But most of, most of the market is in 10-pound bags, fresh ones. It's a, it's a 50 million pound a year industry in, in the States, and the U.S. only produces 5 million pounds. So, we see it's a big opportunity.
Oh. And you need fresh water also?
Actually, we, just for wash down, because like I say, we do all the processing at sea, so everything's just going to go in the bags.
Because of that, the waste, there's practically no waste.
Practically no waste.
Oh, great. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second?
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public?
That's right.
Further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Again, welcome to Bucksport.
Thank you.
Hope things work out for all of us. Pass the word, get a place to start a business, Bucksport. Okay, we're going on to item 9, resignations, appointments, and assignments, and elections. We don't have anything. Go to item 10, approval of quick claim and discharge of deeds. A will be Isaac Raymond, Town Farm Road.
Motion approved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the quick claim deed for Isaac Raymond. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, quick claim deed for Keith and Betty French. State Route 46. We have motion and a second to approve the resolve, I mean, we approve the motion. All those in favor? Opposed?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Those are totally 100% everything.
Everything's paid through June 30th to 2018.
That's very, that's awesome.
C is Lita Layton and Christine Longton, Town Farm Road.
Motion approved.
Second?
We have motion and a second to approve the quick claim deed. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item D is Dale Henderson, Williams Pond Road.
Motion approved.
Yep, why not? Want to make that motion, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We've got a motion to approve both of the Dale Henderson's quick claim deeds. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
I just want to note that all of these were proposed properties that have paid in order to, that's how you get a quick, the quick claim happens, so...
So, your phone calls and letters did work.
What's that?
So, your phone calls and letters did work.
They're catching up.
Okay, our next item is town manager's department report.
Okay, you have department head reports in there as well, but I was honored to be able to attend the assembly at the Miles Lane School on Tuesday, February 6th, where the faculty and students were recognized by the Winter Kids Program for being the bronze medalist in the state for this year's program. They were in competition with 15 other schools, one from each county across the state. The program encouraged healthy eating, outdoor activities, and community and family support. I'm very impressed with the students, teachers, school staff, and volunteers who worked so hard on this project, as well as Camden National Bank, and Hanner for providing items to assist in the Y for the skating rink, which is, was very well-used in the program. It was, they did an amazing video, if you have a chance to see it, of this program. A reminder that the Chamber and the Y are holding Frost Fest at the skating rink on Saturday, February 17th. It's going to be a great day of family outdoor activities, and I encourage everyone to attend. Budgets from department heads are due to be submitted to my office by February 15th. Then I'll be meeting with each one of them to discuss their proposals and preparing the overall budget for the council, which will have its first budget meeting on March 22nd at 6:00 p.m. All budget meetings will be aired on the local cable channel and livestreamed as well. The Goals and Objectives Report that combines the information from the special town council meeting on February 1st, the information submitted by the department heads, and potential funding sources and timelines will be distributed for discussion for the February 22nd council meeting. The Appointments Committee will need to meet prior to the next council meeting to review the list of appointments. There are several vacancies, including one on the planning board, that will need to be advertised. The majority of annual appointments run from April 1st to March 31st. Mandy Alver from Albert Engineering will be meeting with Jan, with Jay Lanker and I on Wednesday, February 14th. We'll look at the two drainage areas that you identified for review behind the Main Street businesses, book stacks in the old flower shop in the Hayson property, and Woodland Heights and Forest Hills. And I notified, two people asked to be notified in the Woodland Heights, Forest Hill area that we would be up there wandering around on the 14th. And finally, the school district is working on its budget process. Proposed changes to the minimum mill rate effort required for local share, the way that funding for CTE, which is the technology portion of the budget, is being handled, and a potential reduction in the amount of state funding for the district has the potential to cause headaches in the budget process. I'm giving you a... Mr. Boothby came to see me today, and the changes that are, were sent out in this year's 279 from, have not yet been approved by the legislature, which made me wonder why they were sent out. The State Department of Education sent them out already, but they did. And I am sure that Bucksport will not be the only community that is raising questions about what that might look like. Anyway, that's, and I, as I said, everyone, the department heads' monthly reports are in the packet. I encourage everyone to read those and look at the kind of activity that they're, they're seeing as well.
Thank you. Any questions on any of that? Any questions from the public? Okay, we'll go to item 12, set public hearings or hold public hearings, approve of any licenses or permits. I believe we do have one license request. We have outdoor vendor business license for Richard Gray doing business with Blue Water Seafood. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second?
We have motion and a second to approve the vendor business license for Richard Gray, Blue Water Seafood. I believe this is a seafood truck, that's how that the, is it going to be in Bucksport?
Yeah, he's got permission to be next door.
Okay.
I guess he's at the hardware.
He was at the hardware last week, I think, yeah. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item 13 is discussion items not on the agenda for the council or the public. We'll open it up to the public first.
Richard Rattella, Town of Bucksport. Just wanted to update you on a couple of things. Heart and Soul has their time for action plan Saturday, February 10th, from 9:30 to 12:30 at the headquarters. Come vote on citizen-generated ideas to create an action plan for Bucksport's future. It's anonymous electronic keypad voting system with immediate results. Every click will count. Food and childcare will be provided. On February 15th, I will be joining Bucksport Middle School and Miles Lane School members from the Student Council. There's 20 of them combined. They are going to be pages for the day. I've got 14 of them to be in the House of Representatives and six to be in the Senate. On February 26th, we're going to be offering a Business Resource Night called Ask the Experts. This will be at the Bucksport High School Library from, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is in conjunction with Eastern Main Development Corporation, the Town of Bucksport, Bucksport Area Chamber of Commerce, and Main Street Bucksport. Refreshments will be provided by Camden National Bank. Instead of sitting there and being lectured, this is the time for small business owners or those thinking about getting into business to come and ask their questions to the experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion items from the public? From the council?
One, just follow-up. What's happening with our walkway?
We have, we have received an appraisal from Mr. Green's appraiser through our attorney. The town is also having an appraisal done of the same thing. The tentative schedule for when this might get to court is early 2019.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion items? More discussion items, council? If not, we'll go on to item 14, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignments, and scheduling of committee meetings. Ordinance committee to discuss food sovereignty ordinance?
Yeah, we got...
And chapter 5.
All kinds of ordinance things. And, and do we want to do the committee thing?
Committee rules, yeah.
That's, the thing about the committee rules, like we talked about, is everybody can take a look at it, and then hopefully that can be fairly, we have discussion, but it's one of those things we hope, we'll be able to take care of pretty quick. I mean, we want to, we don't want it to be a quick discussion, but we want to be able to, to get the changes. If we're going to do that, get them changed quickly. So, I mean, we can, that's the only thing we've got. I don't know if we've got any other committee meetings going on.
Appointments needs to meet.
Finance?
Finance for Spectrum.
Oh, yeah. We'll be, we'll be ready for them?
You sure? I will drive through that.
So, let's do the same thing, and, and appointments, I didn't even know who's on appointments.
I might be on that, too.
Finance, appointments, and...
Ordinance.
But finance shouldn't take a long time, and appointment shouldn't take a long time.
That's what I'm saying, can we, if we do...
So, if you do 5:30...
5:30 and 6:45.
6:45, 5:30, I'm, I can't talk. 5:30, 6:30, and 6:45.
Yeah.
Got it?
Ordinance will be at 5:30.
Yes.
Finance will be at 6:30. Appointments can be at 6:45.
All right, we'll go to item 15.
Motion.
Second?
We have motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
I want to watch the lights. Let's get over this.